Okay.
January 26th.
No, they want to come in person, I just aren't sure what if they could be pushed to February 9.
Okay.
Oh, they're not.
We need an amendment.
Yeah.
So I didn't even need to pull up the screen.
It's just number one.
Well, I at least have to go in and make sure that I have.
Do you want an agenda? You need agenda?
Okay.
Hey, no problem, bud.
Maybe I'll send you an agenda.
I'll get the bill over to you.
You can make it.
What it is.
I'm kidding.
You can need agenda.
Did you get a message?
We got it.
We got it.
Passed out.
Wow.
Are we on?
All right.
Good.
Wow. Very good. It's been a snowy Tuesday, January 26th. It's grandiose, let's call this meeting to a word.
Keisha, Johnner?
Here.
Mark, Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Very good, I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda, we have one amendment to item number one.
Make a motion that we amend the agenda, removal of item number one.
Second.
Motion in support to delete item number one and move it to a future agenda.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Can you put your phones on mute, please? I'm grumpy this morning. I had to shovel. I entertain a motion to approve this morning's amended agenda.
Make the motion to approve today's amended agenda.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good, it's grandiose, any communications?
No, sir.
Public comments, this is the portion of our meeting, the public can speak on items not on this morning's agenda. The board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future board supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments? Looking at the public. Looking at the public. Seeing none, we will move on. I would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Good, on to business. New item number one is discussion and action on the website evaluation team's recommendation and website proposal. Andrew, I assume you're leading that charge?
Sure.
Very good, take her away.
Well, good morning, board, and thank you so much for having us this morning. And this has been kind of a long time coming, so we're excited to be able to present some information for you. You should have a proposal in your packet, and I also gave you a printout of the slides. Brian McMillan is here today on Zoom, and if we have any technical difficulties, you should have a copy of that, too. But first, I wanted to remind all of you guys who was on the evaluation team. And so that was myself, Andrew Myers, and Nicole from the IT department, and then also we had Carla. And the electives were Jake, Michaela, and Keisha. So we had a pretty diverse group of individuals from the county that were helping to review the websites, the proposals that we had, and so, yeah, we interviewed three different firms, and kind of unanimously decided on the proposal from Neapolitan Labs. So that's what we're showing you today, is the proposal from Neapolitan Labs. And hopefully, if you guys like this proposal, we'll continue to move forward with that. There were definitely some key items that I wanted to bring up. We're going to have Brian talk about the proposal, but I wanted to, from the team's perspective, highlight a few items that we really liked about Neapolitan Labs and what really made them stand out, their proposal stand out. So first of all, they've got a pretty good history and portfolio with different Iowa counties and Iowa entities. They do a lot of work with different entities in Iowa, they're an Iowa-based company, they're in Des Moines. So we really liked that aspect of them. And we felt that their customer service, out of the three that we interviewed, was going to be the best. We checked with some of their references and stuff, and we really liked what we heard from their customer service, which I think was really important for us, to be able to have good customer service, to know when we have a problem with our site, we can call somebody, we know they're a smaller team, and we'll know who we're dealing with, we've dealt with them before. So customer service was pretty important for us. And their customization modules was also, and kind of the backend stuff, so the stuff that we look at from the technology perspective, the backend seemed like it was the best solution. We can get very granular with permissions, we can allow users to edit the things that they need to edit and not anything else. And so we were pretty excited about their backend system and functionality. So those were some of the things that we were really excited about with Neapolitan, and feel like they're going to be the best fit for us. Their proposal is a 14-week conversion process to get from where we are today to a new live website. There may or may not be some delays in there, depends on how gathering information goes and stuff, but typically, that's a pretty standard timeframe, it's 14 weeks. So basically, at this point, I don't know, I see Brian's online. At this point, I'd open questions and then allow him to kind of go through the actual proposal itself. There's no questions, Brian, you're up. And we can't hear you, all right? Can you unmute yourself? Try this, any better?
Yep.
That's good, thank you. Thank you, sorry about that. I appreciate everyone's time this morning, I'm not sure if I have the option, it says I can't share a screen while other participants participating or sharing, I don't know if that's something you want to change, or we want to just go from the notes. Yeah, we'll work on it, Brian, but yeah, if you want to go ahead and start. Sure. They do have a copy of the slideshow here. Perfect. Yep, and I heard your introduction, I appreciate everything you said about us, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and chat with you this morning and talk about our proposal. You know, fundamentally, we really are committed to working with Iowa counties, and obviously, in this case, Marion in particular, to create modern websites, we want to make sure they're optimized for mobile devices, make sure they're user-friendly, and I think they're user-friendly from two aspects of things. We want them to be easy for your county residents to find the information, to get what they're looking for, to, you know, find the right department they need to reach out to, or find the right contact for a specific service they're interested in. And we also want to make sure that it's something that brings you efficiency, that streamlines processes on your end. So I think one of the big themes is, we had a conversation, you know, about this a couple of weeks ago at the courthouse, it's just really identifying ways that we can make this website be a win-win all around. I pulled up a few examples, not to say that, you know, Marion County's site has to look like any of these sites, but just to give you some examples of the work that we've done recently. These sites have all been upgraded within the last year, year and a half, so we're talking about fairly new work. Potawatomi County in western Iowa has been a big client base of ours, we've worked with the city of Council Bluffs, we've worked with the county, we've worked with the county-wide tourism committee, conservation department, the auditor's office, and we've built a really nice landing page that has trending topics, that has search, that has photos that can be swapped out and rotated through. In Jones County in eastern Iowa, we launched drone video on the homepage. And I know in talking to some of the team members, you know, you guys have some really great spots in Marion County where you could capture some drone video, and that's just another option to bring in, to make the site really as appealing as possible. Council Bluffs, it's a convention and visitor bureau site, but just a good example of visuals. And one of the things that's exciting, again, about Marion County, not only with the drone video stuff, but it sounds like from the web committee, you all have a lot of great photos and visuals available. And even though there's a primary focus of your website to make sure it's informational and people can find what they're looking for, having some visuals certainly doesn't hurt. And then a final example, a city website in Missouri that we just launched that has a little different style of icons, a little different style of alert bar, and you'll notice all these sites that we go through and examples are built, so every content piece that is on desktop also lives on mobile. Quickly, I know this is a summary of a 20-page proposal or so, but fundamentally, you know, we want a foundation of that clean, modern, responsive, easy-to-navigate website. The second piece of that is making sure that each department has a consistent place to display their information. And we really want to work with departments, I know this is a little bit later on, on this slide, but meeting with them one-on-one has been extremely successful in the projects we have launched with Iowa counties. So taking the time to sit down with the recorder, sit down with the auditor, sit down with, you know, IT, and basically each department in the county that has a presence on the website, understand what they're looking for on the website, and helping them implement that in a consistent manner is really important. We want to work with the web committee to define the best-in-class elements from other county websites. We can certainly leverage some of the sites that we've built, but we're also open to ideas. I think Andrew mentioned modules. If there are other Iowa counties or Midwest counties that don't have sites that we've done, or, you know, any county, feel free to share them with us, and I'd encourage any of you to share with me, or certainly with the web committee, and we will take those feedback pieces into consideration. And that's part of the kickoff meeting that we'll have in person with the web committee to define the direction for the site. So we want to leave that kickoff meeting with a really good idea of what elements we want on the website, what we want the homepage to look like, what ideas we have for department pages, styles, colors, branding, the concept kind of from start to finish, how that site is going to work. And then finally, on kind of this vision slide, a powerful search. All of our websites that we've launched recently employ a search dropdown, which is interactive. I'm never sure exactly what shares across screens, but if it works correctly, you can see that I start typing in birth, and right away, I have birth records, so if somebody's looking for birth certificates, they can find it from the dropdown. We know that with counties, residents don't always know exactly what department does what thing, so if we can help streamline their process and they search for a keyword sheriff sales, and then they get right to the page that shows the database of upcoming and past sheriff sales, we want to make it as easy as possible to find content. Couple more slides, and of course, feel free to interrupt me at the end, we can talk questions. Core elements throughout the website, we talked a little bit about department content. We will have the ability for you to set up alerts on the website, so if a day like today, if the courthouse happened to have adjusted hours, or if it closed early yesterday, or anything was changed due to weather, snow emergencies, those type of things, those can easily be communicated on the website. We're also really excited about the notifications piece, and, you know, I've spent some time, a couple of phone calls, talking to Andrew about how this could look, is really working with you to build a robust notification system, so people in the county can sign up to be notified when a new agenda is posted. And we've had really good success with a couple of the websites we've launched, where, you know, whoever is sending out the board of supervisors meeting agendas now to local media, or to the supervisors themselves, or to department heads, you know, it's a separate process. You put it on the website, send it out as an email, you know, to take these other steps. With this website, with what we've built, you can actually add it to the website, check a box, and then alert anybody who subscribed that a new agenda's been posted, here's a quick link with the details. Interactive forums, I think are a great idea, if there are things that we can streamline, if there are things we can bring to you that help make the process easier. We have some forums for, we built for auditors, for people who are interested in being poll workers. We have forums we built for county attorneys, for people who want to learn about county attorney payment plans. Agendas and minutes, presenting those in a user-friendly fashion, and then we talked a little bit about search. Frequently asked questions are another thing that's been a big success on the websites that we've launched, and we've seen a lot of departments start with just a couple of frequently asked questions. As the sites have been live longer, they've gone with, you know, additional, and basically, you know, what they're trying to do is save somebody in the county from having to make a phone call or come into the office, because they may find an answer to their question right away, or if they do have a service that does require an in-person visitor, does require some documents in the mail, that frequently asked question at least gives them a chance to put the right information in that user's hand, so when they do come to the courthouse and schedule their appointment, they have the right documentation that they need to get their, you know, birth certificate request in, or to renew their driver's license, that type of thing. Consistent appearance around job opportunities, the ability for departments to communicate news and announcements. There's a lot of listings on the current Marion County website, I think that's one of our areas of expertise in working with convention and visitor bureaus, and working with chambers of commerce, finding interactive, easy-to-search, easy-to-find ways to bring in some of the historic sites and church lists and things like that that are on the current Marion County website. And then finally, on these core elements, one of the things that I think really does set us apart, and we look forward to, is working with you to transfer the relevant content from the current website. So when we sit down with you guys as a department, when we sit down with any of the other elected officials or the department heads, you know, we really want to leave those meetings and understand, okay, these three pages on the site, we know everything needs transferred. This page needs an updated copy of a form, you'll send it to us. Maybe this page is outdated, we don't need it anymore. So we really want to identify what needs to be transferred and help you transfer that content, so it's as little work upfront as possible. Couple of other screenshots that we have, we have a look at the recorder page in Crawford County, just kind of shows you the anatomy of these pages, where you have your key contact information, you have an alert message that the recorder can put up and customize an intro to the department, and then key services. And not to say that your page has to look anything like this, but it's an example of a concept, very icon-driven visual, organized in that way. Another one that I know, I think the website committee had appreciated, was the way we set up the auditor's content. So here, you could find out how to register to vote, you can find out information about absentee voting, find what your precincts was, or find election results. And so with the election results, just a really clean listing, here's the recent elections, here's the results, and over time, you'll have sample ballots and other details like that that can be brought over. And then finally, this is our system, I think this was one of the things that our counties have liked the most, and I think was a big hit with the web committee, was our tool called Mentorship Lab. It's a content management system that we've built, we've really worked hand-in-hand with counties and established it. We, you know, make it easy to update, so it's very modular-driven. If you want to add election results to the website, there's a specific module called Election Results. If you want to upload, you know, maybe there's a change to the deadline for an assessor credit, or you want to add some details, there we have an assessor, you know, taxes and credits module that can be updated. So a lot of modules that make it as easy as possible for users to update. And then kind of a final slide before questions, it's just kind of a look at, you know, we have a really nice footprint in Iowa between school districts, cities, counties, and small businesses. I think at last count, we were working with entities in about 55 of Iowa's 99 counties. So I appreciate your time to walk through that, and just happy to answer any questions anybody has. And you did bring up a few things that refreshed my memory. We feel like, the committee felt like this was going to really improve some efficiencies in some areas, especially, like you said, getting the information out to the departments or to the public before they come into the courthouse. If they need to bring in a form, if they need specific things, I think it's going to be a lot easier for the public to try to find some of that information if it's a little better organized. And then, one of the, a couple of the things that we just, we loved about Neapolitan versus some of the other ones that we interviewed, was just a one-on-one kind of white-glove service, where they're going to come in and sit down with every department and figure out, what do you want on your website? Obviously, it has to fit in this framework, but what do you want on there, what can we do a little house cleaning on? Because we've got a lot of stuff, maybe that needs some cleanup work. And then I was really excited about the forms, and, you know, like, HR has forms that, you know, being able to fill out an application online. There's probably many cases in lots of different offices, that's one example, where we can gather information right from our website, bring it in, without having necessarily have somebody come into our offices at all times. So I think there's definitely some efficiencies to be gained here, and we're excited about that.
One question I had, Andrew, is, you know, based on the current business atmosphere, and, you know, we're leaning toward appointment-based business plan. Are we going to be able to be user-friendly for the public to set those appointments up?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're mostly there already on that, Steve.
I know, I know we have, we're doing that with what we have currently.
Right.
But on the website, you know, people, sometimes they don't know where, what department they need to go to set an appointment up. Will that be user-friendly for that?
Yeah, I think we could probably be more, we could be better at that, with the appointment, integrating the appointment system into the individual department pages. Right now, we just kind of have a link right on our main homepage for it, and then the user kind of has to figure out which department they need to go to. But we certainly can put specific links in different department pages, and that brings you straight to that department's appointment system, yes, we can do that, absolutely.
I appreciate Brian, you know, A, that you came down to our meeting, I appreciated that. I know today you had planned to come, but due to weather, so, again, customer service was very important to us, and important to me, and being willing to meet with the departments. And then also the fact that with the e-notifications, I think that that is something, with streamlining that, so when, you know, that's a process that Jake wouldn't necessarily have to do as the auditor, people could sign up to get the e-notification when we have supervisor, board of supervisor meetings. And then also, I don't know if the minutes could go out like that, too, they can get those, they can't? Okay, all right. And, so no, I really, the customer service was huge, and I do appreciate that. So I do think, when looking at it, I did like certain features. We talked about how I liked when you went over, I don't know if you had a, could you go back up? Where it talks, and it talks about the round buttons, yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Yep, so those, and just easy to be able to get to. And some of those, you can, even when you go across them, they raise up, they kind of bounce or whatever, so.
Interactive buttons.
Interactive buttons, yeah, so.
Yeah, we'll definitely kick around some fun effects and kind of make a way to, you know, make this Marion County site, so it's unique to the work we've done, and it brings in those elements that you all like.
And Brian, you also talked about, you could narrow it down to each department, so let's say, the auditor, he would just be able to get into his, or, you know, okay, yep.
Yeah, in fact, one of the things that we'll do, so we'll have our meetings, we usually like to meet twice with departments during the process, once kind of preliminarily, and then once to show them, here's how your page is coming together, here's how things look like. And then towards website launch, we actually have been kind of leaning towards these Zoom-type meetings for training, so that way, the auditor, or the person, or people in his office that might be updating the website, they can be at their computers, we can be at a computer and actually train them, and when they log in, they're only seeing things related to the part of the site that they're updating. So they'd have access to update agendas, they'd have access to put in election results, but if we build something for conservation, they don't have to worry about having that come up. When they look at the list of content, it won't be every department services, it'll just be specific for their department.
From the committee's standpoint, thoughts? Michaela, with all the payment information and everything, comes from the treasurer's department appointments, you're probably the, one of the most frequently visited sites, what do you think about this?
Yes, I think we are probably, definitely a frequent flyer. So I'm really excited, I'm really excited to be able to update our content, which has not been done in many, many years. What I liked most was that when I have the ability to sit down with their representative, it's a very user-friendly format that I can fill out. Right now, for example, if I want to go update the Iowa treasurer's site, you know, Marion County's page on the Iowa treasurer's site, when I log in, I've got to know certain HTML code, and how to do fonts and different effects if I want that out there. I don't necessarily know much about that, and I don't have time to learn.
Right.
For that one website that I maybe go out and touch a couple of times a month. So, you know, a lot of times I have to lean on Andrew Myers, hey, I want to do this, can you help me? I don't even know how to copy and paste, this eliminates all of that.
Excellent, very good.
So, and I felt, out of the three, this was the only one that offered such an ease for the user.
And we, I mean, I think that's critical right there. We have to, and future elected officials and future employees of Marion County have to be able to use this site. And they're not going to come in with a computer background, or an HTML back, or any of that, they have to be able to have ease of use, ease of updating, it's got to be key, both for the taxpayer and for the people actually putting the information out there, so I think that's a great point.
And I think, you know, for example, one of the other vendors, they give you a piece of paper to fill out, and you fill that out, that's your department, you hand it back into them, and then they design your page. What I really liked about these guys is that they will sit down with you. You know, a lot of times in the course of a conversation, or seeing examples of other webpages, whether it's ones that they've designed or not, the ideas kind of start coming. And I think it offers the ability for us to make our treasurer's page unique.
Good.
So.
Tyler?
I have two questions and a comment. My comment is, thank you board and committee for taking the initiative to do this, it's been a long time coming, so thank you. Questions? Would they be able to do embedded maps, so road closure maps in real-time?
That's great.
We have that capability on our end to give you the information, and they, the service bureau says it can be embedded.
Yeah, we can.
When I updated it.
We can certainly embed information, yeah. Brian, is that correct? We can pull embedded APIs and things like that we need to, or HTML? Yeah, and I know that secondary roads in some of our counties, they link up to the service bureau, but we can certainly embed that right in the site, too, either way is an option.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm trying to, right there.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, second, I don't know if this was talked about with the committee, but will this make payment easier across departments for our permitting purposes, or is that not part of the conversation?
So we actually did have a conversation with Brian about e-commerce, an e-commerce portion of the site, which basically means accepting payments, right? That's what e-commerce is, so, and the answer to that is, yes, the site can be developed to accept electronic payments. And so it would, it would matter, it'd depend on the department and the function that they're doing. But I envision, you know, if there was a cost to a specific permit, or a cost to a form, or something like Missy's sitting here, too, like, if there's a cost of that, maybe there's an option that they can go ahead and fill that form out right on our website, go into a payment portal and pay for that right there. That is, that is the desire to do that, and the system can be developed to be able to accept online payments. So obviously, we have to have a payment processor, and so we kind of have to do some work there, whether or not our Heartland system can do that, or we'd have to go to a Stripe or something like that. Those are all options, but yes, the system will be able to be programmed to be able to have an e-commerce portion to it.
Excellent, excellent, very good. Well, good, I thank you, oh, we got a question? Yes?
Kim at Public Health.
Tim's iPad, this is just.
So, yes, that's a good question. Kim asks, is this just for courthouse departments, or is there a thought of bringing others' sites in? The initial build is for the courthouse, or the county site replacing what we currently have. But I know Carla is interested in bringing in a future phase, you might say, in her sites, and if Public Health has a relatively new site, but as time goes on, if Public Health would like to bring them into the full swell, I don't see any reason why that couldn't happen either.
What are, what are the complexities involved with doing that? How easy, my view would be, this is, this site needs to accommodate anything related to Marion County.
I agree.
That's the goal. And I don't care whether it's Public Health, Sheriff, I just, it's got to be able to encompass all of that, to spend the money to be able to put this in place, especially with payment portals and those kinds of things.
Yeah, so, so I guess, Brian, that would be a question for you, I mean, I don't know if you've looked at our Public Health website or not. I think Carla was looking at more of a redesign, which that, you know, you would redesign and bring it into this style and format. Public Health, I believe, runs on a WordPress site right now. And so, Brian, you could probably answer that, are you guys able to bring in WordPress-type sites into this as well? Yeah, so there are a couple of thoughts here, so preliminarily, and we can certainly, we can certainly discuss this or chat about it further, I would recommend creating some sort of a Public Health landing page as part of the Marion County website, but ultimately, sending users here at least, you know, for a while, since this is a fairly new site, provided it contains the information that is accurate, up to date. We've done some cool things to kind of hook in these sites a little more, so we can make them accessible via search from the.
We've done some cool things to kind of hook in these sites a little more, so we can make them accessible via search from the Marion County website. So even to the point of somebody's search for the Hawkeye program, they could get directly that page. If there are feeds through WordPress, we could bring them in, so if there's news posted to the Public Health site, it could be added to the homepage. That certainly is a possibility. That said, I mean, if there is a decision made where we want to integrate this, now that there's a more user-friendly Marion County overall website, we can certainly do that in the scope of the project, too, I think either of those would be possibilities. I will say, in, in Potawatomi County, and this could kind of relate to, to Carla's or this example, you know, we also work with the Conservation Department, so they have a standalone website, but what's kind of cool about it is it's actually powered by the same backend system, the same Manship Lab. And if they post news or events for conservation, it funnels right into the Potawatomi County homepage. So if you go to Potawatomi County to look at upcoming events in the calendar, anything that is coming up in conservation, like hiking with a nature nerd, also comes into the county website. And so that would be the other kind of wild card, is are there opportunities to, you know, could Public Health still have an independent look and feel, but have this tight integration? So if people are finding, or looking for conservation things, they could come in there. And then same thing with economic development, could be something where, you know, elements of that page go into the Marion County site automatically, and elements remain separate. So there's possibilities, flexibility, and I think when we met with Public Health, we'd want to really dive into, you know, this content and how we want to handle it.
So phases is what, kind of what I was picturing.
Yeah, I mean, because Public Health just finished their site this year, this past year, I believe. So, I mean, it's, it's relatively fresh now, so yes, I think it can be integrated in at some point.
And we had extensive conversations about this, like Keisha said, as a potential phasing thing. One of the things with our site is, our Red Rock area site is as big as what the Marion County Iowa site is. So just from a scope standpoint, you know, doing the conversion of the MarionCounty.Iowa.gov first, and then potentially then Phase Two would be to bring in the RedRockArea.com, as well as MarionCountyIowa.com into the system, but maybe getting the first phase done, and then moving that into a second phase of implementation.
Would it be more economical for us to do that, to have everything on one site than having three or four different websites?
The economics don't change that much, other than the hosting costs would probably be, you'd eliminate some hosting fees.
Our hosting fees for both sites are about $2,000, a little over $2,000. So that would be the only savings, if that didn't bump up the hosting for the other site, because you're taking in that much content.
So it's about a wash?
It's about a wash, but you definitely gain some advantages, like Brian was saying about integration.
Right.
Where you can search, if you're on one site and you're actually looking for the content on another site, and you search for that, if it's integrated, then you can actually get where you need to go easier. So I think it would benefit our citizens to eventually go about integrating them all together.
That's our goal.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good goal to do, for sure.
I think from a marketing standpoint, you know, when you're looking at, as a whole, you know, the whole view, I think that that is important, that we eventually do that.
And we agree with that, it's just the, the kind of content and how much you bite off at one time.
Yeah, there's a lot of content on these, on these sites, just kind of flipping through Carla's, Carla's two pages, and there can be some benefit, you know, when you have so much content that's more tourism-focused, more economic development-focused, to let those live, you know, in independent sites with some, with some differences in branding and what content's featured. But I think that all goes back to, you know, when we get to that point, A, you know, we'll meet with Carla and chat with her. I mean, I think there are some opportunities to make sure some of this content's searchable and serviceable. So if you search for hotels in the MarionCountyIowa.gov, it'd be great if you tie into, you know, the page on the Red Rock area site that lists places to stay. I think there's a few hooks like that we can do now, but longer term, it'd be really intriguing to integrate everything. And so if you had a list of towns on one site, that could also live on another side and not require dual work for updating. You know, maybe it's formatted a little differently, or has a little different frontend feel, but is all managed in one place.
So what do you need from us, Andrew?
Well, I guess at this point, we are looking to decide if you guys want to proceed with this now. The cost is listed in your proposal there, and the annual fees on the last page for the MarionCounty.gov site. MarionCountyIowa.gov.
But one advantage of this, Andrew, excuse me for interrupting, but one advantage of this would be, you guys wouldn't have to be involved on a daily basis trying to fix problems with the website.
We would still be doing some of the more in-depth type of work. Or if the department wasn't very comfortable doing a specific task, we would, we'd be involved with that. But the idea would be to train the departments on how to do minor updates and daily task, task updates.
Alright.
That would be the goal. If, certainly if the department isn't comfortable doing that, we could walk through that with retraining, you know, all that stuff. But the goal would be, the very mundane tasks could go to the department, and then the more detailed and higher tasks would stay in the IT department.
Okay. So we have a $25,000 upfront with a maintenance cost of 15?
1,500.
1,500 on an annual basis?
Yep, that's correct.
Discussion, board?
Well, I, I, to, to Mayor Roy Tyler, I'd say this, you know, this has been a long time coming, this has needed to been, this has had, it needed to be done for a long time. I'm in favor.
Missy?
I guess, Mark, I'm in favor, too, I know I talked with Andrew, like, to be able to upload my own agendas, my own minutes. Yeah, we have our online permitting, but to be able to add that to the website, I'm not a big fan, my department doesn't have, like, Facebook and all that, but to have a, a nicer, more user-friendly site that the public feels welcome to go to, we can get messages out there to the public, will be a great asset to all the departments. So I think it, yeah, it's a long time coming. I go to the current site, and I can't find stuff, so, you know, the public can't.
No, it, it, it needs an upgrade, no question about it. We need to have something that has ease of use, both on our end and on the customer end. This seems to fit that bill. I like the style of having done a few website development projects, I like this approach very much. I like that we can upload our road data, I think that's critical. Some of our, some of our live data information, have to be able to do that. Payment processing, critical, gotta be a part of it. And then eventually, all county departments need to be a part of the site, either through, you know, whether it's subsidiary pages or not, they need to be part of the site, so, so I like it. Well done, well done. Like, and thank you, everybody who was involved. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve that the committee move forward and approve the expense to begin project redesign. I was calling that. Sounds all official.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Um, McCombs?
Hi.
Remy?
Hi.
Your Honor?
Hi.
Very good, thank you, Andrew, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Brian.
Brian, thank you. Alright. Branding and style guide discussion.
Well, now that you guys just approved the, uh, New Polisot Labs to be our vendor of choice for websites, they need to have some information on how do we make our site look and feel. And so I guess, I'm not really sure how, how to proceed with this conversation, but I think Brian was going to walk us through a few things, possibly, Brian? Are you still there?
I am.
Okay, maybe give us a, a little bit of a, an idea on what we're talking about here?
So we can, yeah. In regards to when you talk about, now you're going to go into how, what your branding, so what your color scheme's going to be, what your, you know, all that, so we, we didn't want to lump, I advised Andrew to not advise it, to put it into both, because I thought that it was, we needed to first approve, if we were going to go with this. And then second, is a committee can, would you as the board, would we as the board allow the committee to work on this? And then present that? With Brian, I mean, you know, again, coming back later, so it doesn't have to be a lot of detail, it just, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to spend a ton of time going through.
Yes, yep, yep, nope.
So this is more of a?
Takes us, we have enough trouble with the logo.
So that's what we're?
Well, and this kind of has a little bit to do with that, like, you kind of have to know what, what your look and feel wants to be, and, and color scheme and stuff, on how you're going to deal with that, and making your style guide for your site, yes.
You need to move back and go.
That's, it's just being able to, to have the committee to work on it again, and then bring forward to the board some.
So Andrew, do you just need us to say, go ahead and put some ideas together, Brian, do you have some thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think they've done a good job in kind of summarizing, I mean, ultimately, what we want to do at that kickoff meeting, or we'd like to be able to do, is, is sit down and hear from the web committee, and certainly, and get your feedback as part of that, and really try to define a Marion County style. So as part of this website, we're going in and saying, okay, this is going to be the color palette that we're using for the website, but also the vision of it being, this is Marion County's palette of colors. So if you have business cards, if you have email signatures, things like that could be applied. Defining what are our primary fonts, and I, I mentioned this to the, the web committee, but we're big fans of Google fonts. They're open-source, they're easy to bring in, there's a lot of styles, and define, okay, this is Marion County's look and feel. How does that logo look in the header, how does the, you know, main text look on the website, what are header styles, that sort of thing? And defining if you have a situation where, okay, across the top of your webpage, you know, we want that menu bar to be blue, and we want the dropdowns to be red, and then whatever colors we define there, to me, become kind of this branding and style guy, where it's not overly complicated, not crazy, but we leave that website kickoff meeting with something that the committee agrees on, takes to you, and says, okay, here's how we think the new Marion County website should be designed, and then also, here are some applications that you could take this, so in addition to being a branding and style guide for the website, it's something that could be used down the, down the line for stationery, for communications, things like that. So that, that hopefully, Andrew or Keisha, that summarized this all right, but I welcome any other, other feedback.
Well, so why don't, why don't we do this, I, I am fine, Steve, if you're fine, just delegating this to the web committee to come up with some thoughts on how you want this to look and feel. I'm fine with that. I would be the worst person in the world.
As long as it works, I really don't care what color it is.
To, to design, to design this, I just, we just don't ask to be redesigned, alright? So I'm fine if you just continue down that road, come back with a couple options for us to look at, and just carry on.
Okay.
Alright?
Perfect.
Let's close discussion on this item.
Very good, thank you.
Make motion to close discussion.
Second?
Remy?
Hi.
Your Honor?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Impact Community Action Partnership, funding for 2122. Is there anybody here speaking on that?
Yes, good morning, my name is Paula Arkema, and I'm the program coordinator with Impact Community Action Partnership. And also joining me today is our chief operating officer, Julie Peck. It's nice to see everyone this morning, thank you for allowing us to participate today safely from home, especially with the, the roads the way they work today, so we really appreciate that. In the information that I sent down earlier this week, you should have three items. Our funding request letter, a list of the program services that are provided at our Resource Center in Marion County, and then also our budget showing the fiscal year '20 investment in the county. And so I just wanted to take a little bit of time and remind you again that Impact Community Action Partnership assists limited-income families in meeting their basic needs. And we do that in, in quite a variety of ways. We provide families in the community heating assistance, housing assistance, personal hygiene pantry items, food cards, and also work with families to determine their eligibility and getting them linked up to other programming and resources available in the community. And, you know, we just really feel that this assistance not only creates stronger families, but it also results in a stronger community for all of us. You will note, I did provide you the budget. And just to let you know, in fiscal year '20, our Resource Center in Marion County provided services to 1,809 unduplicated individuals, and that represented 852 households in the community. And the total investment in Marion County was just under $678,000 in direct assistance to help those families in the community. And at Impact, you know, we work really hard to keep our, our overhead costs and our operating budget low, or our overhead costs low, sorry. And so 80, 86.42% of this operating budget goes actually to direct assistance to help the families in Marion County. So supporting these efforts of Impact not only makes the difference in the lives of family, but it does help the economy. Those are funds going into, going to local grocery stores, landlords in the community, utility companies, and other businesses in Marion County. And then I did provide you, again, a list of program services that have been offered to the families. You know, this last year, of course, everyone knows, has been quite a year with COVID-19, and it definitely, you know, has affected some of the services that we're able to provide the families. We continue to do what we can to certainly respond efficiently and be very proactive in getting families connected with those basic needed services. You can see here that we've had an incredibly large, really dramatic increase in the amount of requests from families needing both housing assistance and utility crisis assistance. So we've definitely seen quite an increase in that area. And one thing that you won't see on this list, and I do apologize, I didn't get this added in in time, but we also had a partnership with IFA, the Iowa Finance Authority, to assist families, again, with additional housing funds that became available through one of the stimulus packages. And in Marion County, in addition to what's on this page, we also assisted an additional 65 families with their rent, their housing, their rent mortgage or deposit need during this time, and that represented $150,266 just through that IFA program alone.
How much, how much was that?
$150,266. That particular program really allowed us to work with families a little bit more, you know, long-term. We could oftentimes provide several months of housing assistance to those families. And so that was really important to be able to help those families be, you know, continue to be housed stably. And then you can certainly see, there were some programs as well that were negatively affected. You know, of course, we had less families, you know, with the risk of some of the health concerns, you know, less families were requesting things like the recreation passes at the recreation center. And while we do continue to provide things like personal pantry items when available, during kind of that early several months of the pandemic, we just had a real difficulty even being able to access or order items for things like the personal pantry, so we did see a decrease in services as a result of that. Do you guys have any questions so far?
Yeah, I do, I have a question.
Who's, who's on the board, who's on, you are, okay. Just, just a couple of things, and thank you for that overview. So I'm looking on your, your financial sheet here, 141,000 in some form of CARES Act funding for this year. That, that goes away for next year, right, unless it's re-upped or redone?
Julie, can you speak a little bit more to that, I could probably try to answer that, but Julie?
Sure, I can, um, yes, so, um, that CARES Act funding was specific to the first stimulus package that was provided by the federal government. We do know that we have a significant piece in the second package that was, um, sold out here recently, so I anticipate we'll see probably more than 120,000 in this coming year. There's additional funds for water, housing, and utilities included in that package, but yes, eventually that will go away.
And I don't know who has this information, maybe you folks do, maybe Carla does. Do we have any idea of Marion County, of Marion County residents still impacted by COVID to the extent that they're not working? Not normal unemployed, not unemployment apart from COVID, but people who are not working as a result of COVID.
Overall, unemployment now has went back to the levels that it was pre-pandemic. The November numbers, November- Um, in the November numbers, November twenty twenty is the same as February twenty twenty. So although we had a high of about, I think, six point eight percent in the summertime in July or August, um it is back now down to that two point four percent unemployment.
Alright, very good. Thank you, Carla.
I have some, a couple of questions. Um, and this may be more towards Julie. Hey Julie, so overall in the budget from last year, Lihip is one of the biggest federal, it's federal funding, correct? It's coming through?
Yes.
And so a five counties that we're in, seven and a half million come from Lihip, but we only got three hundred and forty thousand. Is there any way that, I mean, that's like a five percent? Is there any way we can do, have a pie chart of who's getting what of that Lihip? And then like what's coming towards? Um, cause administration, um, you know, like your negotiated um indirect cost rate, is that, is that something that applies to Lihip or, and you know, what is that? Do we know?
Yeah, that does apply to Lihip.
Okay. And do you know what that, what you guys can negotiate for that? Do you have any idea?
I ha- I would have to check with Chris.
Okay.
So to that point though, I, and I always have to be reminded of this, when we see ours on your uh your operational costs, those are costs directly attributable to services in Marion County, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So it's an allocation.
And then one other question is the weatherization of the eight homes. Can you guys give more detail what that is? Cause that's roughly, you know, fourteen thousand, five hundred per home. Is that new windows? What was that? Do you have any idea?
Yep, so that is uh about average for a, a home, um whether I said any, it's roughly fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so what they do is they go into the home, um they'll check the walls for insulation, so they'll blow insulation into the sidewalls and attics. Um, they will replace um old outdated appliances like furnace, water heater, those sorts of things with high efficiency um products. They'll do refrigerators, um if they need to. They don't replace windows, but they do caulk and seal um any existing problems with the windows. Um, I think the insulation and the furnaces, of course, are the biggest chunk of that.
Okay, and then those people apply? Is there an order in which they do that?
Uh, there's a priority list, um which is determined, once you apply for Lihip, you're eligible for weatherization. Um, you're put onto a priority list and those with the highest energy usage um are first on the list.
And then I have one last question. And regarding um, right now, you guys are doing this all remotely. Do you guys have any idea? Are you looking at coming back or you, I mean, how, what's the future look like?
So one of our initiatives is to sort of figure out what our future looked like um this year past the pandemic. We've had some um really amazing things happening, working remotely. Um, one of those is um attendance has been amazing for employees, things like that. Uh, but we have a sixteen hour requirement from Lihip that requires we're in the community personally. Um, sixteen hours uh per week during the Lihip season. So um, right now the state has waived that um due to the pandemic, but we anticipate that rule will come back. So we do anticipate to be back in the community in some capacity um in person. Hopefully by September.
How does a person contact you now if, if they're in request of assistance?
Yep, we have, um, uh, most of our stuff is done remotely through phone or email. Um, and so our number is up um on our Facebook, on our website, um and folks can just call in and do all of their application processes uh over the phone.
So your funding request to us is for indirect expenses? Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, even before COVID, I know that, that, that people were having a hard time even at the building you're in now in Marion County having a hard time getting ahold of anybody. You never knew when anybody was gonna be there.
Yeah, I think we've had, we had some transition when we merged from Red Rock to Impact, trying to get that settled. Um. It appears to, I haven't heard much chatter lately. Um, certainly if we're still having that issue, um, we'd love to, to know, but I, I think that's sort of settled now.
So how many people do you have working out of our, our side? Or will you have?
This past year when we had in person, we had uh one person there full-time and then one person there part-time. Um.
Full-time?
Of course, it depends on.
I don't think so.
What they consider full-time? You, clarity on what you consider full-time? The sixteen hours per week you're talking about? Are you, because full-time is, that would be meaning you had somebody here all the time because you guys didn't.
Paula, do you remember over the course of the?
Yeah, during P, the, like the Lihip season, we had one staff that was basically um stationed at, well, we had one at Warren and one at Marion County and then they kind of, you know. So I, I think that they were both there full-time during Lihip season. I, I'll have to double check on that to make sure, but I'm thinking that we had.
I guess, I guess my, 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 my point is, if we're going to continue to do this program, we need some kind of continuity and when people are gonna be there and when they're not gonna be there. And, eh, you know, we, we need to get that out to the public somehow.
Is there, is there an understanding of when Lihip season is?
Yes, so it runs from October first to April thirtieth each year.
So October through, okay. And, and to distribute this three hundred and forty thousand dollars plus some of these other costs, you, you're obviously getting, you're obviously sending out cash to folks. So people are getting it. So I assume they know that that's the window. There's some way that gets, that message gets out.
Yes, yep. Again, we do a lot of um advertising through our partners in the community, um Facebook and then of course, um our website.
This is probably something we need to coordinate with what we're doing with our website.
With our website.
As well, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
But for five, but you're asking for five thousand? Right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And Marion County's gonna end up with about, if you pull out the CARES Act funding, which may get renewed, who knows, may double. I mean, they turn on the printing presses and up. We're at five twenty if you take out that CARES Act funding. So, so about five hundred thousand dollars comes to residents who need it, even though, uh even though unemployment has gone back down, we probably have people that.
That's what these numbers are saying.
Yeah. So cash is getting out to folks.
The seven and a half million that's coming in through Lihip, I mean, so roughly, you know, depending upon what your guys' percentage, you know, the negotiated, you know, rate that you guys are able to pull off for administration and salary. I do struggle a little bit with it being five counties and for Lihip, we get like roughly five percent.
Just Polk County in our region?
Yes.
Well, that's where, that's where it goes.
It is, I understand, but I mean, it's just, it would be interesting to see what the price.
Are we five, are we five percent of the population of the region?
I don't know.
Are we five percent? Is it, is it proportional?
Yeah, if anybody knows, that would be great.
So Polk County is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla gets all the money and we get whatever's left over.
It is the eight-hundred-pound gorilla, but we don't deny any applications, um unless we run out of federal funding. And that's hasn't happened in the fifteen years I've been in Impact. So I would think that the five percent um could be affected by, of course, better marketing and um partnership with the community to make sure that those who are eligible for the funding received it. I think you, um, you know, as a county have a lower poverty percentage rate um than Polk does as well, which, you know, creates some of that.
Sure, but, but with increased marketing, that number could go up to Marion County.
Yep, absolutely.
So there's no cap, okay?
Okay, yep, that's what I needed clarity on.
Alright, good, very good. Well, I, I, I don't have a problem considering the world we live in right now for this year doing the five thousand. When we get the five twenty back, people, cash is being distributed to residents. We need to improve marketing, it sounds like. We need to get the word out. We need to have some confidence from a board standpoint that there are people there during this Lihip season, which that's the lion's share of the, of the dollars going out. And weatherization, so. So for five thousand, that's, we're get, we're getting some pretty good, uh, that's not a term, it's just tax money coming back.
Julie, then are you going to come back later for the, and regarding the building, the in-kind?
Um, yeah, so that's sort of up in the air right now. We're still trying to decide what that looks like because of the partnership, you know, what does that look like in terms of how much presence do we need in the community and do we need that building space? Um, we're really just unsure at this point what's gonna happen.
Okay, how much do we do right now?
Typically fifteen. For the, it's with the building, which is considered in-kind.
Yep.
We're just giving space.
Yeah, right, but they consider, so I, I guess what I'm trying to get clarity is, is it, would, today would just be the five thousand, you'd have to come back and negotiate the, the building in in-kind. Okay, alright.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Steve, any, any objections?
I don't know, if the numbers are accurate, I have no objections.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve the five thousand dollar uh, what we call the state allocation for employee wages.
Contribution that the government.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Johnor?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye. Very good. Thank you, ladies, appreciate it. Thank you for the information.
Thanks Paula, thanks Julie.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Alright, next we have a targeted industry attraction strategy plan proposal. I assume Carla's, is you?
Yes, it is, thank you. Uh, we have been meeting our commissioners last year uh before COVID when we were talking about visioning and planning and looking at how do we move the needle forward. And one of the big components that we've talked about has been business attraction. So what um our goals are with this proposal for this planning is to diversify the economy, to build on our manufacturing assets and to really enhance the efforts of not only just Marion County, but our communities as we work towards business attraction and to take a little, a more aggressive approach together. Uh, in the process of discussing this, these proposals, we have met with PACE and their Economic Development Group. We have met with uh officials from the city of Knoxville. We have met with the Knoxville Chamber. We have met with some of our smaller communities to gain their um ideas, support um towards this initiative and we have received very positive comments from them. As we looked at several proposals, the one that we selected that we are recommending to move forward with, the reason we really liked the proposal was that they are also site selectors. And so Janet and her team also work on the other side of looking for communities and sites for businesses. They have a rural focus, which we think is really important to have that perspective. And what we were impressed with, with the case studies that they provided that was in the packet was that um they have a good history, a track record of doing the analysis, the strategies, but also then moving that into implementation for business recruitment. And um you can see there, I'll let Janet and her team, I believe Janet and Ashley are both on the line. Talk a little bit more about the objectives and introduce themselves to you.
Great, thank you Carla for the warm introduction. Uh, thank you to the uh uh team here for um hosting us today. Again, apologies with the weather, us not being able to be there in person. We are there in spirit and we are warm, safe and dry. So I'm Janet Adie with Adie Advantage. I'm joined by Ashley Sprague, who is our Director of Client Engagement. Um, what, what uh we thought we'd do this morning, we gave you two different versions of this work plan. One was kind of a four-page summary, which Carla has up here for us to kind of work from. And it's also backed up with a, a much longer proposal that goes into more detail. Uh, but what, I thought we would maybe spend our, our, our time with you. Um, it's just sharing a little bit about uh why we're doing this and, and what other communities and counties similar to you are doing across the country. Um, have Ashley kind of walk through the uh proposed uh work plan here, talk about outcomes and then answer any questions that, that you may have. Um, I think Carla, I appreciate the way that you set this up because um really what we're, we're doing here is helping ensure that Marion County stays on the cutting edge. And we know that um uh Carla and her team have been considered to be a little bit of data geeks and so we certainly speak that same language. But we also understand that bringing um different toolsets and bringing the experience to analyze it, interpret that data to create actionable plans on how to actually recruit businesses and be successful in that are tied into this as well. Um, a little bit about Adie Advantage, we're actually second generation uh site selectors and economic developers. My dad, Bob Adie, was a, um, I, I guess people have called him like a, a Yoda in the field. I guess that resonates with some people. But what, what I can tell you about that is that we never went on a family vacation without touring the local industrial parks. And so it is in my DNA and it's something um that I've been doing now for uh close to twenty years. In that amount of time, um just like my father, we focused on the Midwest, we focused on rural and we've now worked with over five hundred and counting uh economic development organizations. The uh target industry analysis is in our wheelhouse. It's kind of a, a bread and butter item that we offer. But we take pride in adjusting it, adapting it to our communities. And as, as Carla had mentioned, bringing it forward so that it's not just a report on the shelf, it's actually, so now how do we pivot from the data and the analysis of which industries to target based on a number of factors, which Ashley will, will go deeper in. But how do we then pivot that same information to say, how do we best position ourselves to each of these industries and how do we develop strategies to go after them? I, in Iowa, we've got some, some pretty good shops. If I go from east to west, uh Council Bluffs, Midwest Growth Partners, Western Iowa Advantage we're working with right now, Carroll County, um Mid-Iowa Growth Partnership to the north, um Otomo to the east, Quad Cities on the east coast. Um, and then helping with some developments such as Big Cedar, um Industrial Park and some others. Um, but as I mentioned, we're really throughout um the Midwest and even from coast to coast. So we bring a very good perspective as to what's new and what's happening. Um, I suspect that you may say, Janet, nothing's happening in the world of target industry analysis. It's kind of a, a backbone of economic development with the idea being if you understand what your unique assets are, we could have a great, um, we reverse engineer basically the site selection process to determine which companies place the greatest value on your particular mix of assets. What's new and exciting right now in this world, in the space, is that um COVID has kind of reshuffled the decks. And so it's actually a perfect time to be looking at this uh because there's a great opportunity to be aggressive and to move while many other communities are pausing and reflecting and kind of looking at their navels. And so this is a, a great opportunity. Over the, over the summer, actually since COVID, we've probably done six or eight target industry um refinements where we've gone back and, and um explained to clients how priorities may have changed and strategies um needed to adapt in order to be successful today. Uh, we've got great data sets as far as not only what's happened so far with the first and second ripple effects of COVID, but what the outlook is. So we feel very confident in um our predictions in terms of uh getting you well positioned not only now, but for the next three to five years um in our recommendations. So I talked about the time is, uh growth and diversification is another thing, Carla, that you mentioned. Do, having a plan for target industries helps you do that. And what we found is that those communities that have industry diversification are the ones that end up being the most resilient when there are situations like COVID. Um, they're the, you know, it makes sense, like you diversify your stock portfolio. Just like that, you diversify the industries you're in and you diversify the strategies that you're using to pursue those. So that is also one of the outcomes that we have here today. Um, and I think what I'll, I'll leave you on before I turn it over to Ashley is let's talk about outcomes a little bit. How do you measure outcomes? I know that um all of our economic development clients have to provide information on jobs and investment. Uh, businesses reached and businesses reached through BRE and businesses reached through um the gardening program and everything else. So there's a lot of accountability there. We felt that it was only fair that we put that same accountability, that same spotlight on ourselves. So for over four years now, um, we have done a follow-up survey with our clients to ask them what kinds of impacts have, has our work had? And maybe most importantly, if you had to do it all over again, would you choose us? And we're still at a hundred percent, cross your fingers, after that period of time. So we're really on the right track here in terms of providing outcomes that are meaningful and actionable for our clients. Uh, if you don't have any immediate questions, I'll turn it over to Ashley and she'll kind of walk us through it. Actually, we're right here on pages one and four. If you could do the next two pages, Carla. Um, and that will be the meat of the methodology here, um, focused on the outcomes.
We actually might want to go back a page.
Back a page, there we go. That'll work. Thank you.
So I'll kind of walk through, um, high level of the methodology and then again, dive into any specific questions that you all have. Uh, but basically kind of the approach that we take to projects is discover, distill, do. So in the discovery phase, it's pretty much those first two steps that you see here. We try to gain a really good understanding, baseline understanding, uh, what the region's assets are and thinking not only about Marion County and your demographics and your strengths and weaknesses, but also looking at sort of a broader region because we know companies don't necessarily care about jurisdictional boundaries. So, you know, we'll look at assets like airports, highways, things like that at more regional level, labor force, things like that to really show kind of this, uh, broader region of assets that you have. Um, in the first step, we're looking at some of the key criteria that, you know, site selectors and companies will use when making those location decisions. So, you know, thinking about if the site selector or company was looking at your website, you know, before even reaching out to Carla to get some information, what could they find about you all on your website? From their own, uh, public data sources, you know, what's out there? We work to confirm that with, um, comprehensive stakeholder engagement. So, um, ideally we would do this onsite. We kind of, uh, positioned this one as virtual. Obviously we can be flexible. But with COVID, we found, um, some good alternatives to conducting those virtually. But that would include one-on-one employer interviews with the main employers in the area to kind of get a sense of, you know, why they do business in the region, what the strengths and weaknesses are, um, digging into some of their specific talent challenges. And so we know that that's gonna be a key driver for business location, location decisions. Um, and then we'll also do stakeholder roundtables with, you know, groups like you all around the table to just gain those different perspectives of what the assets are. We want to talk to people from workforce development, educational institutions, utility companies, all of those kinds of things to kind of confirm our desk research with that onsite local knowledge. From there, we kind of distill it into an opportunity and barrier assessment. So we say, what are the economic assets in the region? Then looking at your sites and buildings, and that'll be important when we get to the target industries so that we know, you know, you have the, the product available to support these target industries when you attract them there. And if not, you know, where are their gaps? And then what are the unique opportunities and challenges associated with doing business in the region? So we'll kind of start with that regional positioning, if you will, and then build out the target industry. So, uh, basically conduct a, a six-digit NEXCOT analysis, four or six-digit NEXCOT analysis. And NEXCOT is the North American Industry Classification System. So, uh, we get very granular, you know, we're not just looking at agriculture and food processing, but we can really drill down into specific subsectors that make the most sense for Marion County based on your unique assets. And when we're thinking about how we screen these industries, we really think about it kind of threefold. We think about, you know, the overall industry characteristics. So how is this performing at a national level, at a state level, at a regional level? You know, does it make sense to go after this industry from that perspective? But then also based on Marion County's unique goals and assets, does it make sense? So we really try to balance that to give you a, a wide range portfolio of industries that you can go after and know that you have a really strong business case for. And that's the next piece of it where we kind of transition from the research to the marketing piece. And that will, will help you build out those business cases for each target industry, even getting to the point of comparing you to different regions where you might be competing with that industry. So you can put your best foot forward when you're looking to attract those kinds of industries. And that information can be used on your website, on brochures, anything like that, when you pitch presentation with a client, um, all those sorts of things. And then finally, um, the overall target industry marketing strategies and pitch coaching is kind of the final deliverable here. And we'll make recommendations for marketing that makes sense to cross all target industries. So things like a website, a regional profile, things like that. And then we'll make specific recommendations on each target industry on how you can best reach decision makers in those target industries. Because they all kind of work a little bit differently. You're all, you're gonna have different, you know, industry groups, different places where you can, uh, have touchpoints with those decision makers and will really help you, uh, pin down that piece of it. And then as kind of a follow-up to that, we'll provide education and coaching on responding to requests for information as those come in and pitching to re, region throughout the site selection process as Carla gets those kinds of requests.
Thank you, Ashley and Janet. Um, one of the things I will say, um, as we've looked at this, we do have funding capacity within our budget uh, to do this type of a study. We also plan to address our utility partners and our local economic depart, uh, partners for some additional funding to pay for this as being partners of it. I know, uh, we've received some very good feedback from both of them of interest, um, in helping us to achieve this, to kind of elevate everyone's ability to attract business, whether that be at countywide or that connection also with our communities.
So, so Carla, from, uh, your team, your board's perspective, this is something they all want to proceed with?
That is correct, as well as the partners that we've met with in Pella, Knoxville, and the communities that we've talked to, um, as well as my colleagues that I've talked to that have used Janet, seen what the benefit for their communities as they go through this process. I think it will position us nicely to be able to have the strategies in place and the implementation strategy to go after business attraction. And then the, the long-term plan within the next six months is also to couple that with some place-making strategy. And we're working on that yet, but we're not quite ready to come forward with a proposal for that. But our goal was to really get the best at doing each of those instead of trying to do one general vision plan that combines those, but rather to do two separate ones that interact.
This is David Bommer, Chair at MCDC, and we fully support this, uh, the board does.
Very good. Yeah, well, if, uh, if you've got it within your budget this year, Carla, then good. I think just a couple of initial thoughts from me, and the board can certainly chime in. Number one, when we're thinking about developing a, for lack of a better term, a plan, a blueprint for how we would go out and recruit businesses that fit within the current assets that Marion County has, how much time will this take to do this?
If we can get this contract signed, uh, in February, we should be done by mid-May.
Okay. All right. Because I don't know which lady, uh, Janet or Ashley, I don't know which one of you said this, but, uh, there's a certain amount of urgency to this that developing a, a consulting-based plan to try to give us a, for lack of a better term, and I'm, I'm, I don't mean to oversimplify this, but an elevator speech to go out and recruit businesses and to help us focus on certain businesses. With our economy, the way that it is right now in Marion County, we're very fortunate, Carla, you decided our unemployment numbers. But we know that in order to attract other businesses, I think Janet, it was you said, economic diversification is critical, and it is. I've been saying that for a long time. We, we need to get other types of businesses in Marion County. That, that is something we have to have if and when we get any kind of economic disruption. We just experienced one, a black swan event. There will be others. And we need to be prepared for that, uh, and have a broad, uh, employment base to work with. So, so I'll be very curi- curious to see what the results are, especially your codes. Does that include service industries, the NAICS, or are we just talking manufacturing?
Yes, it does include every industry. And it, that's, actually, that's gonna be one of the strategic questions because you, Marion County is so strong in manufacturing, and certainly we can get into a lot of details here in terms of which sectors of manufacturing and subsectors. But I think that part of the strategy may also be to look at professional scientific and technical services. It may be to look in the categories of warehousing and distribution. It may be to look at, um, some of the other types of occupations. So we are looking at it all broadly. Everything's in.
Good, very good. Excellent. Okay. Good. Board, any comments, questions?
Well, that was one of my questions, Mark. I, when they, when they speak of targeted industries, I, I agree with you. I, not necessarily manu-, not just focus on manufacturing, but to diversify the industries somehow.
Yeah.
Do you have an overall suc-, like a, a success example? I mean, I know you had some links here, but do you have anything that's similar to our county size that you have, like, you could speak about?
Yeah, I, I would love to give an example, um, of a project we did a number of years ago. But we were retained by Quad Cities First over on the east coast of Iowa to do their original target industry analysis. And we went through this whole process and we came up with three to five target industries. And I remember a couple of them. Um, and so one of them was, um, metalworking, metal fabrication. You can imagine they've got quite a few assets there with the Rock Island Arsenal and a number of other things there. That really made that an attractive strategy, um, an attractive target industry. Another one was wind. At the time, wind was, um, nascent and, and growing. They had a, um, an MRO maintenance repair operation and a community college for, for wind turbines. They had a number of different, they had the, the, uh, Mississippi River, uh, for, for transport, excuse me. And they had a number of large parcels that weren't served by utilities that were perfect for the laydown of, of some of those parts. Um, so they had a number of assets that supported each of these target industries, which is exactly what we described. Uh, but what I would like to, to share as the example is how did we come up with the marketing strategy then for each of those target industries? And how would we do something similar for you? Um, in the, in the metal and prefabrication, metal and, uh, manufacturing industries, what we found is that they really wanted to get small metalworking companies in. So, you know, 25 to 50 employees, not the, you know, hundred million dollar, billion dollar companies. They wanted to get lots of smaller companies in to help support some of their major players. And when you're doing that kind of marketing, I mean, you, we found that there were just literally thousands and thousands and thousands of potential prospects for that. So we really had to boil it down into, well, where, where do we have a strong business case? That was number one. And then number two, how can we reach them effectively? And so in that instance, what we recommended was that they recruit from high-cost areas, which included the Chicago metropolitan area, um, and a number of other metro areas. And we had all the data and statistics that showed that that would be high cost. But we still needed to narrow it down because it's, you know, a dollar per letter, even if you were to do a direct mail, even if we could get the list. And so what we did is we tied it into Fabtech, which is a metalworking trade show. And we figured people who are paying to go to Fabtech are those who are investing in their business and are looking at new ideas. And so what we recommended in that case was doing, um, some receptions and, and some targeting for the people who were going to Fabtech from the Chicagoland market where we had a proven business case and to, to go that route with, with that industry. Whereas when we looked at OEMs for, um, wind, wind, wind turbines best, basically, we found that there were only, you know, a limited number of companies throughout the world who were making those, say 15 companies. And when we, when we digged into that further, we saw that there was an association called the American Wind Energy Association. And of course, um, all of those wind turbine companies were there, but some were all competitors to Iowa. Everybody under the sun who was going after wind at the time was going to, OEA is what it was called. And so what we figured out is that the people from Quad Cities could actually go to the Canadian Wind Energy Association, CANWEA. So again, all 15, um, OEMs that were making the windmills were there and a one-tenth of the people, because it was just, it was just a smaller subset. It was people from Canada who were going there. And people from Iowa stood out like a sore thumb because they weren't from Canada. So in addition to that, we did a brochure for them, actually. We did a brochure about where the Quad Cities is and why it was great for, for, uh, wind energy. And we printed like three copies of it, I'm serious. We, because we didn't need that many. We just needed enough to give the salesman, um, their, their account executive there, um, enough, uh, credentials to get the appointment. So what we did is we did one brochure and then we translated it into a number of different languages because some of these companies were from Italy or from Germany or from, uh, different countries. And that's, that's how we, we recommended they, and we actually did the marketing in that case. Uh, so that's an example of how we take the, uh, the data, we turn it into information. We use it to strategically position yourself and then we go forward and make the recommendations of how you actually tackle and engage with those markets, um, to stand out and to get your message through.
Okay, very good. Thank you. In, in this report, will, will, when you talk about obstacles and barriers, will you also include, uh, any reference to regulatory, taxation, those types of things?
Yeah, we definitely look at the state and regional and local business climate when we're assessing that overall opportunity barrier assessment.
Good, excellent. Good.
So can I, can I assume that in this analysis of an industry, and if an industry is, is indeed targeted, will that include a site that that business can be located on? Is that part of the analysis?
Yeah, we, uh, Ashley, go ahead and take that one.
Yeah, so we'll, when we do our, uh, virtual windshield tour under the comprehensive stakeholder engagement piece, we'll have Carla kind of show us all the available sites and buildings, even if they're not, you know, quite in the state of readiness to attract a business there. But we'll use that as kind of screening to our target industry analysis as well. So, you know, we, we won't recommend food processing, for example, if you don't have a site or water capacity or, you know, any of those assets to support it. So it'll be kind of a, a screening factor as we go through it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Ward? Okay. So Carla, it sounds like you've got this within your budget, so you don't really need an approval from us.
No, we would, we just really wanted to make you informed of it, give you an opportunity to comment, have your questions answered so that, um, you know what we're doing and can be part of this process.
No, I appreciate it very much. Thank you for, uh, the overview. I will look forward with great anticipation to this report. So, thank you. With that, I entertain a motion to close discussion.
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Very good. We have an appointment to the Marion County Board of Health, Robin Falsgraf. Did I say?
Falsgraf, uh-huh.
Did I say it right? All right. Term ending 12/31/2023. I don't know if Kim is on.
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. Robin Falsgraf will, um, would come on to take Luanne Willis's place. Um, Luanne served two terms, and so we're very thankful for her, um, for her service. And now we look forward to working with Robin. Uh, she comes in at interesting times. So I hope that you will, uh, approve her and appoint her to the Board of Health for us.
Very good. Thank you, Kim. Board, any questions for Kim? Entertaining motion, is there a motion to approve the appointment?
I make motion to approve Robin Falsgraf to the Board of Health.
Second.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good. Thank you. Send our thanks to Robin. Kim, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Next, we have, uh, BA Campus Demolition Project. What do we want to talk about?
You're the boss. My coffee's starting to wear off, so.
Uh-oh. I know we, uh, was it last meeting we authorized you to go out and start looking at bids and things like that, Chris? Where, where are we at in that process?
Well, right now, we've got, uh, we're putting our public bid package together.
Okay.
So we hope to roll out with that sometime, probably in March, which is looking right now. So, um, we had discussed moving forward with, uh, no one long-term asbestos testing, getting our geotechnical work taken care of, um, hazardous material testing, all things that at the end of the day will provide that information to the public bid package for potential demo contractors or specialty contractors to look at. Takes all the guesswork out on those folks. So instead of looking at a one, so one pre-bid meeting and then, uh, four hours to walk through 156 acres and take a stab in the dark at how much abatement they have to do, um, they're, they're gonna bid high in the millions. So the reality of it is by doing all this work, we're gonna know with confluences finalized plan between, uh, the county and Knoxville, um, we're gonna know where we can't take dirt, we're gonna know where we can take dirt. We're gonna know the consistency of the dirt for backfill, whether it's suitable. A demo contractor is gonna know exactly how much dirt is available to him. He's gonna know what he has to bring in onsite if he has to shop for it around the county. So many things, uh, building surveys, understanding the exact tonnage. So many things, building surveys, understanding the exact tonnage, because there's no way in a four-hour walk through they're going to be able to estimate properly. So at the end of the day, we're getting all that due diligence out of the way. So the reality of it is, when bids roll in, we're looking at millions of dollars that they otherwise would have estimated high. As far as demo contractors go, I bet I've had forty phone calls. Oh, I get phone calls sometimes twice a day. I don't know how the word is spreading that, because I've had from Washington State to California, Michigan, nationwide, I'm getting lots and lots of phone calls. I would tell you out of that group, there's probably only nine, ten, twenty tops contractors that I think would actually bid this project, just because of the size and scope of it.
So, so right now, we've got, we've got testing work going on, we've got soil work going on. We've got, well, for lack of a better term, mapping of the of the property, tonnage, tunnels, all those things, we'll call that. Bid pre-work is going on to cut that expense out of the bid process. So anybody we do get, we save probably several hundred thousand dollars off the top by not having to do that or getting a contract overage.
Yeah, and really, at the end of the day, what I'm trying to minimize is change orders, yes. So in a, in a project of this scope, without providing this information ahead of time, this can turn out to be a change order nightmare.
Sure.
Not knowing how much asbestos is there, what hazardous materials are on site, not knowing whether or not they can pull dirt from anywhere on site to do a layer compaction to make sure that it's development ready. So really, what we're doing is we're minimizing, we know in a project this size, we're going to have change orders. We have to accept that. But if we can minimize that exposure, that means we're minimizing ultimately extra costs to the tax base. So we're doing our due diligence. The the demo contractors that have called, that would be suitable for this type of work, when I've told them what we're doing, they're blown away that governments go on the extra step to actually make sure they're saving tax dollars. So it's been very, very well received.
Good, excellent, excellent. So where we stand right now, then, with the work that, Chris, I'll call it the pre-work that's going on right now out of the site and then developing what will eventually become an RFP for a bid package submission. We have a draft twenty-eight E that we've received from Nathan Overberg that I need to still read through. And then we will submit that twenty-eight E to the city of Knoxville for review as well. So we'll start that review process within the next day or two, as soon as I talk to Nathan. And then we also have a financial piece to this that will begin in February with Michael and his team as we work through that process, very similar to what we did with Prairie Ridge. And we think about what we're doing from a debt issuance standpoint. Again, interest rates are extremely favorable. I talked to Michael this last week, and we are still in a very, a very good interest rate environment, at least from a funding standpoint, a debt financing standpoint, not from a return or a yield standpoint. So it does save us some, some cost there. But as we move forward, then we will have a meeting with Knoxville, probably plan on that in February, maybe in February-ish. Maybe once we get the bid packages, Chris. I've talked with Mayor Hatch. It looks like Confluence Plan One is the one that they're leaning toward from a council standpoint. And I know they want to make some adjustments to that. I know you talked to Matt, and they're working on those, those adjustments. So, so everything's in play. Right now, it is moving forward with a target for spring to begin work on, on the demo phase of this project. So, Chris, thank you for all your efforts. Board, are there any questions?
No, thank you, Chris, for everything you're doing.
Very good, and we still have the legislative piece that's that is working forward. Remember, I met with our lobbyists and several representatives up there. It sounds like that fund that we talked about will be second funnel, which is a March timeframe when that will occur. So I'll know more in March on that refund, how that would work. So Kelly has been keeping me apprised of that as well, doing a great job for us up there. Any other questions on that? Very good. With that, I will entertain a motion to close discussion on this item.
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Chris.
Next, Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Seventeen is authorizing the county engineer to sign Corps of Engineer real estate application. Are we, are we buying them out, Tyler, what are we doing?
Not quite. So we have a bridge replacement project going through the core ground. We have an easement for the right of way through that core ground, the roadway and the bridge. However, we're raising the road to meet the new Red Rock regulation plan, control plan.
That's on Kennedy.
Kennedy Street. So what we're doing is borrowing dirt from the adjacent core proper to raise the road.
To do that.
And we need a real estate application in place, and I need to be authorized to sign documents to do that, to proceed. It'll save us money in the long run to borrow dirt directly adjacent to the project.
Roger that, got it. Steve, any questions on that? That, I'd entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I move we approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-One Seventeen.
I'll second that.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Next, we have a receive and file for Marion County Attorney Civil Service Commission appointment for Brian Bigwet, term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Ed?
I'm trying to make sure, can you folks hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, good morning.
Good morning.
We had an individual who had asked to be, not be renewed, for lack of a better term. And Deputy Bigwet, or now ex-Deputy Bigwet indicated he had some extra time on his hands. And I couldn't imagine a better person who would be able to make recommendations concerning law enforcement officers than, in my opinion, one of the best law enforcement officers Marion County's ever had. So I have nominated him as my designee pursuant to the code for the Civil Service Commission.
Very good, thank you. Ed, Michaela, I assume you would have had a list of things for Brian to do?
Well, I I assume this will still allow him time to.
Ed, did you hear that?
I did, and and I would be, I will make it abundantly clear that Michaela's obligations will take priority. We'll schedule a way in advance not to interfere anyway.
You have my consent, then.
Excellent. With that, I would entertain.
I will say, Brian hoped that this organization would beat Monday through Friday from eight to four thirty, but I don't think that'll happen.
You're getting a head shake from all of them from Michaela, so I think that's, yeah. With that, I entertain a motion to receive and file this civil service appointment. So moved.
Second.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Very good, thank you, thank you, Ed. Next, we have receipt and file, receipt of ASME Iowa Council sixty-one Union Initial Bargaining Proposal. Lisa.
I did formally receive the union initial proposal that I'll hand out.
Thank you.
To all of you. We do have fourteen days to put our proposal together and respond. So we will be working with Renee. We'll have fourteen days to get that proposal back to them.
So Lisa, is it your recommendation that the board individually review the proposal? We will see if we file it, obviously, with this. And then in our next meeting, come back to you with counter, or what's your, what's your thought?
We would meet with Renee.
Okay.
And Renee would put those, definitely get your thoughts together. And then we would meet with Renee via conference call probably. And then put those, and then she'll put that all together for us.
So that'll probably have to be a special posted meeting then?
Or individually?
We'll probably do it during the next meeting. So we'll have fourteen days to get that done, that'll be the next meeting. And then we will exchange our proposal to the union.
Outside of, it's outside of, it's outside of, you guys do that.
No, it'll have, it'll have to be in a public meeting.
Okay.
This year is a little different in how normally it's all done in one meeting. They give us theirs, we give them theirs, then we negotiate.
Yeah, there's been a little change in the process here.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
For next meeting?
For next meeting, then the county will present their initial proposal back to them and respond, and then we will go from there.
Very good. Board, any questions initially on this?
Just want to review it.
No.
All right. I entertain a motion to receive and file this initial bargaining proposal.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Johnner.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi. Very good, thank you, Lisa, thank you. Jake will put that on the next agenda. Next, we have a site plan for thirteen oh eight County Line Road in Monroe.
Yes, so this, this property is currently zoned highway, or C-two highway commercial, rezoned in two thousand and ten. We have a site plan before us that was prepared by Aaron Van Ruggen and Marvin Associates. It's a twenty-seven unit boat camper storage, and then there's nine additional showing up on the east that would be future proposed. This did go have a public hearing. Property owners within five hundred feet were notified for the zoning commission meeting, January nineteen, twenty twenty-one. That passed five to nothing. I had no correspondence from any of the notified neighbors. So before you, I can give you the business plan that was done by owner Aaron Adal. And with the project, the uniqueness is that the paved road entering in terms to go to Jersey Frees, Casey's, and Subway is maintained by the city of Monroe. They have given their approval for the driveway access. And there will need to be a paved approach off of that pavement per Marion County ordinance. Then the gravel road that will be where the second driveway is going to go in is maintained by Jasper County. They've also given their approval for that driveway. There is detention proposed. The pictures that I gave you guys show that this site does set up much higher than the neighbor. So there is detention proposed. I do have the detention plan, and there'll be detention to the east and to the south. Tyler did do a review of that, not the computations, but I can let Tyler speak to.
I just reviewed for our ordinance, for compliance with the ordinance, any technical information regarding detention.
So, yeah, we would rely on the sign up, you know, the engineer that designed it, that was designed by Aaron as well. I have the detention report in, on, in file.
Is this east of fourteen, twenty-fourteen or sixty-three?
So right, the drive, the paved drive you're seeing turns to go to Jersey Frees and Casey's. So this is a high-travelled portion, you know, high-traveled road. The house to the east is uncommercial, or the west is uncommercial as well. It was a part of this rezoning in two thousand and ten that originally was going to be Jersey Frees, but then was not utilized for that. They are proposing screening, or I'm sorry, onsite security cameras. And as you can see from the layout and the buildings that I sent you, they have like this out in a somewhat screening for the, you know, the neighboring property. So all of the buildings, the two outside buildings face inward, all the activity will be on the, the two inward aisles to form its own kind of screening. And they are now proposing that the end, where the driveways end to the south and to the east and west, they'll put up a fencing to keep anybody from having the brilliant idea to use the grass as a turnaround. Also protection to the neighbors. So there's lighting, the lighting that is proposed is on the interior buildings that will also form, you know, it'll, it'll have, have lighting available, but it'll protect the neighbors from having lights that would then be shining out on.
Will we know light pollution for the neighbors?
Yep, yep, correct.
The neighbors are, are aware of this?
The neighbors were notified, I've got no correspondence from the neighbors. They were probably, they were sent a notice. The only sign that's proposed is on the north end of the middle of the building, which there again will have lighting. Yeah, so they're in, been in contact with the DNR about the NPDAS permit because it will be close to that acre disturbance. And there was no parking requirements in Marion County ordinance for storage units to have required parking. So I guess, if you guys have any other questions? It meets all of Marion County's requirements as far as the site plan. And as I said, it's zoned correctly, and the land use plan also shows it to be commercial, so, good location.
Well, I think it meets all the neighbor, or it meets all our requirements, and neighbors are not objecting. I, I don't have a problem with it.
Is there a motion to, Miss Union, approval?
Yes.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the site plan as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Ramey.
Hi.
Johnner.
Hi.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion on employee leave donation policy. Who is taking this one?
So I can kick it off because I made a request to you a few weeks or months ago.
This is the policy to give all leave to Steve McCombs, is that what this is?
Yeah.
All right, I just want to make sure.
I move we approve.
So I, I'm not going to claim to be an expert on this. Full disclosure, I did not have as much time to research, just as I had hoped. But I just kind of wanted to highlight what leave donation policies could be as a benefit to the employee and employer possibly. There are definitely pros and cons, fewer cons than pros, I would say. So to kind of highlight, leave donation policies can be complex, but they can add value to your benefit package. They can be enhancement to morale and camaraderie amongst employees. And it could result in less out-of-pocket and reduce time off on the books in various ways for the employer. Through, through the research, it's pretty evident that it needs to be a managed, you know, set policy that's managed and fairly implemented. So basically having standardized criteria laid out within your policy for eligibility and how things are handled. However, the IRS does have a couple of instances that are, I guess, recognized by them for leave donation. That's a medical emergency and then a presidential disaster declaration. And there are differences between those. And then, as far as policies go, there are different types. It could be banks or pools, direct leave sharing, so between Jake and I, or between a group of employees for a specific instance, or leave donation to charitable organizations. Some things, I guess, how did we get here? I guess the reason I brought this to the forefront was because we had, we did not have, but we had some near instances due to the pandemic. In kind of both ends of the spectrum, long-term employee, chronic health issues, used up a lot of his time related to that, then COVID, you know, and complications with that. Other instance was younger, could be a younger employee, not much leave on the books, COVID, and then complications following. Put both employees near the, the end of their leave of all types. So the other thing related to this could be, you know, long-term employees just that have large banks looking to get rid of it. They either don't want paid out in cash at the end of their employment or retirement. But there's, there are ways to donate it to charitable organizations. But there's, there are ways to donate it to charitable organizations or to, possibly to another type of policy that we've talked about would be first responder time off policy. So I don't know what, exactly what county, Marion County's policies are around maternity leave, but there are other government entities where maternity leave is a little bit of a struggle. And firsthand experience here, adoption isn't always covered by leave, and donation leave policies come in very useful for adoptive parents. So there are lots, lots of different instances where this could come into play. So I guess that's kinda the highlights of it. There are very good examples about, out there for setting up policy, or example policies. There's lots of good information about how to set one up. So I guess I just wanted to kinda highlight some of these things that could be beneficial to employees and the county as well, and see if you're interested in pursuing something like this, or at least seeing what a draft policy would look like, and then you could decide. And I have not talked with Lisa about it, so.
I guess my only concern would be what, what a bookkeeping type of nightmare it would be and how that, how that would be handled.
And I have not talked in depth with Lisa about that. Kind of in passing, talked to Danny about it. First glance, it seems really easy. But through the research, there are some challenges with FICA and IFRS and things like that. If, if it's direct employee-to-employee sharing, it could be classified, or could be where both individuals are taxed. If it falls under one of those IRS-related categories, only the recipient would then be taxed on that.
Right, 1099.
That would be my next question, when you bring up the IRS, would that be tax deductible for the people that were donating?
No, no.
No?
No.
Okay.
So.
But yet they'll tax it on the other end?
It is a little more complicated than I had ever thought, but I guess it's, it's, I'm just bringing it.
That don't hardly seem right. Can't deduct it on one side, but they'll tax you on the other end. Well, that sounds right. That sounds right, never mind.
You know what, Tyler, I think, you know, in terms of benefits and things of that nature, I'm always interested in creative benefit options for employees, especially within this sector, because you're pretty constrained on what you can do as opposed to the private sector.
Right.
Where, where there's a far greater level of creativity in benefit packages. There's greater expense in those benefit packages, but you're able to be far more creative in it. So I guess I would be open to a draft proposal or a concept that we could walk through where it didn't turn into a barter system, where it was employees that have banked large sums of leave, and they get with their buddy and say, hey, I'll give you five, five days for X cash.
Right.
Because that's what, you know, those are the kinds of things that you get into with these. The private, the private sector dealt with it.
How you control that.
So.
Yeah, I think that would have to be clear.
Can I just?
There are, there are, there are policies, and I would like you to look at this too, since you brought this up. Maybe you and Lisa could work on this, where, and I don't think we do this right now, where employees can buy extra days of vacation or sell days of vaca, or, or benefit time. That would work in, so there's, there's a way to get redemption, cash redemption for banked time in the current, in the current environment. You know, you're not waiting till retirement, but you're saying, I, I might be able to sell a portion of my time. And some employers use it to, you know, offset certain costs, and they're all over the map, so you'd have to look it up.
You have a question?
There are government entities locally that do have these types of policies. I believe Knoxville does. Knoxville Schools, if you follow any of their board meetings and local classes here, they have discussed it. I don't know that they have a formalized policy to date. I asked Cassie for it and they've not received it.
Yeah, and I have a, I, boy, I wanna say it's six months ago, she and I talked about it in passing. I haven't followed up, so, so I, I get open to a concept if you could include that component in your research, maybe with Lisa. I'm sure we can talk to our consultants on this and get some pretty good ideas.
I think that, and Kim is saying that she'd like to be a part of the planning discussion because I would like to have Kim's input as far as what that would do to her funding or how she feels for hers. There's, there's a, a lot of possibilities, but a lot more questions that I have as far as what I dove into, if it's more of a very tight.
Yep, yep.
Only certain circumstances would it fit, and then you have a cap on what the employees can actually donate. So maybe they can only donate four or five hours to this employee. It's not unlimited. But I, I'm, obviously I'm open to the idea, and, but I have a lot of questions. I have some examples that I'd be willing to work with Tyler to see if we can come up with something.
Yeah, look into it, look into it.
It, it may be challenging in a governmental perspective to, you know, maybe that's what Kim's alluding to. Work on that secondary road, which is statutorily restricted. So there's gonna be some challenges.
But is it, is it something that, if you're a secondary road crew member, can you donate to another secondary road crew member? Maybe we, but then how do you, if Misty, I'm taking Misty, I'm picking on you, but she's a one-person department, then that's not fair to, is that fair to Misty that she has no way to donate to her? So we can look at it.
Look, take a look at it, come back with a proposal if there are more hurdles than there are abilities to make it work. I, I'm not interested in something, we gotta do a lot of exceptions, okay?
I agree.
So it's gotta be something that could potentially work for everybody and not become abused.
Absolutely.
All right.
Well, I, I just appreciate the, hearing me out and, and being open-minded about it.
Absolutely, absolutely appreciate the thought, Tyler. Thank you very much. Go ahead and give it Lisa and work on something. Perfect. Motion to close discussion on this item.
Motion to close discussion.
Second.
Raimi.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Very good, updates, Mr. McCombs.
We have four minutes, and then the Zoom's gonna shut off.
No, it doesn't shut off.
It doesn't? Okay. Cause I only put it on for two.
You have all the time in the world, Steve.
I'm good.
It's like, oh. Cause I only put it for two hours.
This is Johnner.
Um, yes, so the 28th at 8:00 AM, we're gonna, Carla and I, with the Des Moines Partnership for the broadband study, we're going, I'm, Carla and I personally are going to go to the REC meeting and speak to them, and hopefully see if they'll be willing to support and join forces there. Had a lot of planning and zoning last night and have impact this week, so. And then tomorrow, I guess, we have early childhood, so jump, so.
Okay, very good, thank you. I know I've got, can we have public health this afternoon, do we not?
Yes, we do.
Okay, public health and cross-board is today as well. And yeah, it's gonna be a day of mental health and public health, so. Very good. All right, that's all I got. Anybody else for the good of the order? Michaela, any last thoughts on what you'd like your husband to do for next projects? Or you can get it in the record.
I can attest that he tends to overdo every task he takes on, so, yeah. Even something small like, like this commission.
This is good.
He can be very devoted.
Very good, very good.
I'd just like to say that the board, the boards that were put up at the courthouse are an awesome improvement. Brian Hatch did a great job with the design, the layout of the courthouse. Chris put them up, Andrew, you know, got it coordinated. They're such a great improvement over the 1970s board that we've had for.
The TV screens.
Yes.
I, I'm actually, I'm coming over today to take a look.
They're, they're great.
I, you think about everything, to modernize all this and, and update the courthouse and everything that's been done, just from a, from a public standpoint, from the work that we do, just excellent.
Going to the website, that'll be 21st century, I mean.
And we've got Carla working on business development, so I love it. This is great.
Got a big, big business, a big one coming forward to you guys soon.
Excellent.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. Thank you for the road department. They're diligent, so thank you for our facilities, for, you know, taking care of, you know, the buildings and snow removal.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Raimi.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned, thank you.